We should introduce to all of you David Fraser, our new city manager. And so if you can remember everyone, thanks for having us start up here and do roll call. Nancy? Uh, no, just introduce yourself.
I'm Nancy West.
Charles Sidwell.
Anthony West.
James Nacita.
Tim Powell.
Alice North.
Doug Neely.
Carter Sun.
Rocky Smith.
Chris Brunner.
Dan Lozwa.
Walter.
Thank you. Okay, moving along then, we'll move right into the discussion items, which is essentially the bulk of the meeting. So, um, if you'd like to take us through that.
Just as a point of technology.
Yes?
My name is not on here. Um, I don't know how to log in so I can be, um...
It's coming.
...all of the discussion item.
I assure you, it wasn't intentional.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Um, as you know, uh, this, uh, large file in front of you is a body of amendments that the planning commission, um, has been working on for several years, almost two and a half years now. Um, the city commission started the public hearing for this file on, uh, March 17th, and, uh, we are currently have an open record, um, and the next hearing for this will be on April 21st. My proposal for this evening is to, uh, I'm going to direct you to, uh, some of the exhibits that are in your packet, and we're going to work primarily from two of those exhibits. The first exhibit is the memo describing the proposed amendments. That's an eight-page document, and if we work off of that, I think we'll be able to make it through the work session in a reasonable amount of time. Um, and if we have specific questions with respect to the code, uh, we can refer to the, uh, code amendments by chapter section, uh, which is 157 pages long. And, uh, also at the March 17th hearing, the commission has some questions, which we prepared a memo in response to those questions about the, uh, archaeology map, the, uh, Newell Creek urban reserves area, and also questions about conservation easements, which we'll do our best to fill you in on tonight. Uh, so without further ado, let's, uh, look at the memo describing the proposed amendments. And, uh, as Tony Conkle, our community development director, introduced all of these to you on March 17th, but I'm going to briefly go back over some of the, uh, some of the issues that we're dealing with.
Excuse me just a moment. Do you all know why Tony's not here? He is a brand-new father, so...
He had a, uh, baby girl, I understand. So, he'll be back with us on March, uh, on April, uh, 19th, so... Uh, we are proposing some, uh, six-month review of, uh, the development review code. Um, these are, uh, amendments that are to chapters 12, 13, 15, 16, and 17 of the code, and they primarily govern zoning, site development, land division, street design, architectural review, parking, signs, hillside development, home occupations variances, and other similar topics. And, uh, we do have some outstanding issues from the July 2009 adoption of, uh, these amendments, which we're introducing, we introduced on the 17th, but I will go back over. Uh, the first one is to do with temp, regulation of temporary structures. We've prepared a definition of what, of these structures, uh, membrane structures in 1704 of the code. And, uh, what this regulation would do was severely limit or eliminate the ability to put up a temporary fabric or metal structure on private property. And this, uh, code language would prohibit these, uh, structures if they are viewable from the public right-of-way, and it would prohibit them, um, in front of the, of the house. And, uh, we're not proposing that this code go into effect until January 1st, 2011, so as to allow some time to prepare a public education program about the regulation, since it would go into effect and it would, uh, on January the 1st of 2001, and it would be retroactive. Uh, there would be no grandfather in these structures, so if you have a membrane structure on your property, you'll be required to come into compliance, um, once the code enforcement department notifies you. Uh, we would prepare a public information campaign, which we could do on the website, through utility billing, through the, uh, city involvement commission, and through the neighborhood associations, as well as through, uh, the, uh, regular meetings of the planning commission and city commission.
That, um, um, compliance date is only for this particular code piece?
That is correct.
That's otherwise going to affect as soon as they're adopted?
That's correct.
Thank you.
With respect to the, uh, second outstanding issue, the status of the archaeological resources map, uh, we have communicated with the staff of the state historic preservation office, or SHPO, um, and preliminarily discussed how to go about creating an archaeology map. And, uh, there are some cost issues and scoping issues associated with doing that kind of work. Uh, and as a, um, interim measure, what we prepared as part of these code amendments is as part of completeness review for any site development or land division, uh, site plan and design review, or historic review, uh, the applicant will be required to communicate with the state historic preservation office and, uh, ask for some determination from the office, from SHPO, as to what scope of, uh, review they should do for archaeological resources. And, you know, if the state, if SHPO does not respond in 45 days, um, to that, to that letter from the applicant, we would, uh, not require that as an article of completeness. Now, that code language, um, could be put into effect with or without, um, having a archaeological sensitivity map. And, uh, the requirement, um, for the, uh, for this is that it would apply to any ground disturbance, or which is defined as movement of native soils. Um, so the city could choose to do one of the following: we could adopt the noticing requirements, um, with the ground disturbing projects as an interim measure, and wait for a future sensitivity, sensitivity map when complete. Two, uh, would be to, uh, adopt the noticing requirements and not pursue a sensitivity map, or three, make no code amendments on archaeological resources and wait to adopt a future sensitivity map. And, um, we are ready to help the commission or the planning commission draft, um, a scope of work, uh, for that map. Um, and I'll talk more about that later on as we, at the, uh, once we've gone through the code amendments, so I want to talk about that. Uh, third issue is, uh, upzoning commercial land in the South End area. Um, this, uh, city's decided that, um, this process would, uh, take some time to do. Uh, we began work with the city involvement commission to get input on upzoning in the South End area, and we decided, uh, to suspend that work for the time being so that we can address process questions and staffing levels of doing that. Uh, similarly, with the sign code update, sign code is chapter 15 of the code. It's not part of the zoning or subdivision regulations, and, uh, we are proposing to start amendments to the sign code later this year. Uh, with respect to regulation on tree, of trees on private property, uh, we currently do not regulate trees on private property unless they are in development review or in a, uh, overload zone where tree cutting will disturb a natural resource or steep slope area. And, uh, we also have adopted a new code section, 1741, uh, regulating tree protection in, uh, on sites under development review, as well as a voluntary section for, uh, uh, heritage trees and groves within our public and community street tree section in chapter 1208, which requires owner consent for designation of a historic, uh, say, a historic tree or a significant tree, um, in, under that section. So now we'll go into the proposed code amendments, um, and please stop me if you want me to refer to the actual code amendments packet. We can look at that in more detail. Uh, under streets, that's chapter 12.04, um, the, the revisions that we're proposing to the session, clear up language for constrained streets for minor partitions and small subdivisions, and provides the staff with more flexibility to create public right-of-ways instead of flag lots. It also provides enforcement and, uh, provisions for the city engineer to, uh, to require construction specifications adhered to Oregon standards, Oregon state standards. Same provisions have been, uh, proposed for chapters 1304, 1308, and 13.12. That's water service sewer regulations, storm water management. They provide, the amendments provide clear authority for the city to enforce the permit standards, and when these street sections were moved from Title 16, since they used to be part of that, to Title 12, the codification company renumbered the sections inadvertently, and, uh, although that didn't change the legal status of the amendments, what we've proposed is to put those all back in the code so that there is a online version of a complete section of, uh, code amendments for that.
Were these, um, put into place or changed this word because we have issues in the right-of-way? There's an awful lot of right-of-way changes. Or is this clarifying and cleaning up?
It's mostly clarifying and cleaning up. It, uh, this, the public works, uh, department and the city engineer are, wanted to be sure that whether they require a separate permit for sewer, or water, or storm water, they have the sort of enforcement ability, because they require different permits for different things. Similarly, uh, well, not similarly, but, um, outside of the, uh, development review for, say, site plan or land division, potentially, you would want, uh, street standards to apply if you're just doing a, uh, a major street improve, a major improvement, and there's no sidewalk in place. You have to call upon a part of the code to upgrade that standard and bring it up to a specification outside of the land use process, and that was the other rationale for putting those in chapter 12. Um, chapter 16.08 subdivisions, uh, the archaeological, uh, the letter to the state historic preservation office is, is now a, uh, application requirement in that section. In chapter 1616, um, we have a lot size limitation for part, minor partitions. What it says is that if you have enough land to go through a subdivision process, or, uh, if you can divide land into four or more lots using the underlying minimum lot size of your zone, you have to go through a subdivision process as opposed to a minor partition. And we're clarifying that this standard does not apply to an R2 zone, or multi-family zoning designation, um, so that, uh, we can get the density that we need and the site planning that we need, um, through the site plan and design review process without having to worry about the, uh, partition requirement that is applicable there. Does that make sense? Okay. Uh, so, and a SHPO letter is listed specifically as an application requirement in that section. In chapter 17.04, we provided a definition for carpool. Uh, this would be definition 17.04.178, and it means a group of two or more commuters, including the driver. We share the ride to or from work, school, or other destination. And in 17.04.1458, van pool means a group of five or more computers. Computers, excuse me. Our computer, let's hope not.
Computers.
And the definition, definition for a membrane or fabric-covered storage area is an area covered by tarp or tensioned metal or fabric membrane that is either attached to a rigid framework, natural feature, or some other feature that is used for storage. It's not intended to include the weatherproofing of a vehicle, boat, or other individual item by a tarp or other type of covering, as long as the covering is attached directly to and covers only that, the particular item.
Uh, do you want them right now? You said you were going to come back to some of these things.
Take them as we, as they come up.
Okay. Um, Rocky?
For the temporary structures, does that, um, include things like a car lot having a tent, or a, or a, uh, the shopping center doing a sidewalk sale, or, I mean, how, how specific does that go? Is it for pretty much all of those, or is that, is it, is temporary meaning, kind of, is it temporary a weekend, is it temporary, um, two weeks?
Well, let's refer to the code section as regular.
From, from, from our perspective, if that, temporary, man, uh, let's, let's take it two ways. For your examples, that would, that would not be affected. You know, if somebody were to put up a tent for a, a weekend, uh, wedding party?
Right.
That would not be effective.
Right.
If you had a boat underneath a, a big awning type thing, that is, uh, that is affected by the code.
Well, and we also recognize the signs where, if somebody bought a, a little, little gazebo thing, the eight-by-eight, that's not included here.
Well, if we go to page 90 of the code packet, um, the, this is, uh, page one of six of chapter 17.54, which are the supplemental zoning regulations. Membrane or fabric-covered storage area, all, all membrane and fabric structures are, shall be located behind the front building line, shall not be visible from the abutting right-of-way at the pedestrian level, and here's the exceptions. It may be made by the community development director for temporary storage as long as the membrane or fabric-covered storage area is removed within 10 days and is not erected for more than 20 days in one calendar year, and is not seen as a nuisance to the city. Um, and it does not apply to gardens and tents in the garden.
And, and it's specifically active outdoor uses, and I would think that those things that are active outdoor uses, specifically, it was a little storage of things was what they were, what, the heart of what we were looking at.
Daphne, your question.
Um, so, um, I believe our, when, we have fences, that the fences can be higher if they're in the backyard versus in the front yard, so these, but it, it sounds like these fabric or membranes or metal membrane, uh, temporary structures, doesn't matter if they're front yard or backyard, it's just wherever you can see them, correct?
Visible from the public right-of-way at, at the pedestrian level, so yeah.
Um, so now I just, maybe you can help refresh, so what's the policy on the boats and RVs that once you take the covers off, are the boats and RVs still supposed to be in the yards?
I believe as long as you have a, uh, current tags, tags that, if you have current tags on a vehicle or boat or trailer.
But I think, Daphne, are you just talking about when an RV is tarped off, tarped over? That isn't covered under this, they specifically...
Right, but I'm, I'm just, I'm asking of just the broader policy behind this.
You're talking about the nuisance of it.
So the question is, when you have an RV?
Yes, or a boat, or a camper sitting there.
If it's licensed and if it's in operable condition, it can be, it can be there.
That's correct.
In the front yard.
That's the code.
Mm-hmm.
Streets or the street is different.
The hope is that, um, it would come in for an accessory building permit and use a more appropriate material at some point, in, in the interest of covering that.
See, now you're open. That's a whole nother can.
Yeah, that sounds like, that sounds like a can of worms that you...
We're taking one step at a time.
And I, I think the bigger question that we need to discuss, that maybe we should put off to the end, is enforcement.
Right.
Because we've been reluctant to enforce this up to this point, so I think we need to talk about the resources necessary and, you know, the how of that. And why we put that off to the end, because several of these are going to require enforcement.
Correct.
That we do not now have. Okay, go ahead.
The amendments to the residential design standards, um, is fairly detailed, um, so I'm gonna, oh, please. Pardon?
We can get the numbers so we can follow.
Yeah. Uh, seven, chapter 1720, which starts on, uh... Starts on page, uh, 29 of the big packet, or 28 actually, sorry, 28. The, uh, the language that's been changed here is that, uh, requiring that whether you do an addition to a garage, a new garage, or a new structure, we're requiring that you comply with one of three residential design options. There's a series, series of, uh, residential design options in here, and, uh, actually, then you have residential design elements, which are the actual features that you put on your house to show compliance, and depending on, uh, which option you fall under, you're required to show a certain number of residential design elements. The code amendments clarify how, uh, garage width is measured for carports, because these amendments are intended to regulate both carports and garages, the same, we don't distinguish between them. Uh, for the garage width, it's measured on the foremost interior garage walls or the carport cover, and this was previously just a staff interpretation and now it's being We've added the requirement that through lots, that are lots with both a street on the front or in the rear of the lot, uh, have a requirement to add, uh, window trim to both the street side and the other street side. And, let's see. The number of design elements, um, has been increased so that there are more choices. Specifically, um, we've added, um, as an additional element, a roof overhang of 16 inches or greater. Window trim with a minimum of four inches, window grids excluding any windows in the garage door or front door. And as an additional element, a window over the garage door, that's a minimum of 12 square feet with window trim, which is a minimum of four inches. And basically just clarified language, when you have a garage that's proposed in front of the living area of a house, we trigger one of two requirements, either a porch that's at least 60 square feet and five feet deep, or, uh, that the garage have a second-level facade with a window.
Okay.
A 16-inch, uh, eve, I guess it is.
Yeah.
Extension out. Is that, uh, to not be included within the, uh, setback, I think a three-foot setback?
Yeah. Two inches. Oh, sorry, two feet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, two feet into, uh, any setback.
Okay.
Amendments to the historic overlay district, uh, the SHPO archaeological letter is required for completeness in that section.
White four?
And that would be required in, uh, 17.40.060. So, all exterior alteration and new construction, um, when they apply, is required to communicate with SHPO and provide a description of the project. We'll develop a template for that, uh, for them to use, and that will be part of the 17.32, C general commercial district, the only change there is there was a typo. Um, it did say any use permitted in the MUE mixed-use corridor zone is also permitted in the, in the C general commercial zone, so that's changed to C. Chapter 17.41, tree protection standards. What we've done in this section is provide some clarification on how, um, applicants calculate mitigation trees. We want to be sure that, uh, when an applicant turns in a tree protection and mitigation plan, that they first calculate all trees that are six inches or greater in size, measured diameter, breast height, on the site, and then provide condition for all of those trees. And document any trees that are currently, currently dead, diseased, dying, or hazardous. Uh, and then they subtract the number of dead, diseased, hazardous trees, uh, from the total number of trees on the development site, and they don't use that number in calculation of mitigation trees.
Is this tree replaced with, in the development?
Well, then they, we'll get to that. Once they've got the number of healthy trees on the site, then they define the construction area, so I'll ask, we'll ask for a easements, uh, building footprints, uh, right-of-ways, pathways, and things like that, impervious surfaces. All of those are defined as construction area, and then they determine the number and diameter of trees to be removed within the construction area, and based on the size of each tree, uh, they use column two of the table to determine the number of replacement trees required. And then they separately calculate the number of trees outside the construction area, and based on the size of those trees, there's a separate replacement ratio required. Already used the standard, uh, to review the subdivision, appears to be, it's an option for applicants to use in addition to the other options for tree mitigation, uh, so it doesn't preclude an applicant from protecting trees in a tract, nor does it require that those trees be placed in a tract. It just provides the mitigation ratio. And the trees that are calculated and mitigated and replanted, uh, after site plan approval or subdivision approval will require a conservation easement or, uh, deed restriction to permanently protect those trees on the property.
An applicant, um, on, under any of the tree options, can they prove to you that they have done the corporate mitigation without hiring an arborist, a certified arborist?
It would require this to be prepared by an arborist.
It's required for all options?
Yeah. Uh, and similarly, if it was in the public right-of-way and a street use were being removed, uh, we either have the city parks arborist go out and look at the condition of the tree, um, or a private arborist hired by the...
Does the city have an arborist that you go to?
We have the parks arborist doing, uh, going out and verifying in certain conditions. Uh, yep.
See, the parks arborist, and we have somebody on staff?
Larry Potter.
Larry Potter.
Oh, okay.
I have a question, um, and I'm going to prove that I've been here now five days. And I'm also gonna prove, uh, some measure of cynicism, because, um, over my career, uh, certain builders in certain other cities, and I'm sure not here, uh, have, have taught me some learned lessons about treatment removal and how creative they can be. And so what I'm curious about is, um, whether or not someone could essentially buy a tract of land and before they become an applicant, uh, this code only affects once they've applied. So what, what prevents them from essentially clearcutting, uh, a lot before they come in and apply?
Sits within a natural resource overlay district or based on.
And, and so that kind of prompts me to wonder about whether or not, not knowing exactly what the intent of the commission and, and the planning commission is, um, whether or not you want to have the word dead tree in here as opposed to diseased or hazardous trees, because, uh, the quickest way to make one dead, of course, is to cut it down. Boy, I don't know how you guys feel about, you know, drafting legislation on the floor, as it were, but, um, I'm not sure, that just struck me kind of as an odd incentive, that we probably wouldn't want to encourage that kind of creativity among our development community. And since we've already said earlier that we don't regulate anything on these private property, unless it's a heritage tree, and if the goal is to maintain the canopy, we probably don't want to put that carrot out there, maybe.
I'd follow up on that, since that's one of my pet peeves, you heard me say this year after year, that, um, I thought that, um, properties that wanted to annex, that, that if they scout the property, they had to mitigate or do something before they would be accepted, an annexation applicant would accept. I thought that we were talking about the same thing on development, that if someone brought in an application and they'd scout their land, that we required mitigation prior to the receipt of an application. Are we not there?
Uh, yeah, we have drafted some language that would be used as part of a discretionary annexation review for the city commission to, uh, you could adopt that language by resolution. Um, it was part of the proceedings, but it didn't, it, it, it's not something that needs to be adopted as a, as a zone and code amendment, but it could be adopted by resolution by the commission, as part of an annexation review. And what it would do would, uh, it would be similar to, it's exactly the same language that Wills, Wilsonville and Lake Oswego have.
And it's not a piece of this?
It's not.
Okay.
Part of this.
Are there others who are interested in looking at that further? Okay, let's keep upping that forward. And then, so that's, that's an annexation property outside the city boundaries, but what about a development application that, you know, I mean, I've got tons of trees on my property, if I come in, you're gonna just kick me like anyone else if I scout my land?
I'm looking, I'm not sure at all.
Well, but no, by, by coming in for an application, I scouted last week, um, is there any?
There's no.
Is that on the record?
Only if it's in an elder zone. They're not, these, uh, these code amendments would not have a look-back type provision in, um, for that.
I think, we had a discussion before where we didn't want to take an individual property or a.
Private.
Private decision of whether they want to cut down a tree or not.
Well, but the problem is, if you don't identify heritage trees in this city, the oldest city, Oregon, if we can't identify those heritage trees, you are going to lose these trees, and you have no control over it. And that has been, a year ago, we sat and talked about this in another work session, and we decided not to pursue that in the short term. But I think we have, I think that's something we have to look at. And whether we get a natural resource committee and go get financing to support that through grants or whatever, we are doing this city a disservice by not pursuing this, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor. And this, my, my concern about this might be a swash somewhat, if I, if I understood that, um, and this might even get some of you pause, but whenever, uh, let's say a person does exactly what the marriage is described, in the development, once they become an applicant, what is the percentage of canopy they're required to, in other words, the reinstallment, if you will, of new trees to replace those that they took out? Is there a ratio there that would help people feel a little bit more comfortable about the risk we're taking in the clearcutting area?
Not prescribed to amount of canopy on a development site, other than minimum landscaping requirements, um, and that would not translate to tree canopy per se. It could be formal landscaping. The ratios are, uh, basically prescribed by the number of trees you have to replace.
Let's assume that they clearcut them, there aren't any trees to replace.
Right.
The minimum landscaping standards, do they require any deciduous hardwood? Even if it's not canopy, is there a caliper size or a certain number per square foot that is required?
Street trees are required to be two inches in diameter. On a commercial lot, uh, two inches in diameter. Um, and, uh, if you're in the natural resource overlay district, you're precluded from doing that, so, um, otherwise, uh, I think the minimum diameter of tree we were approved is one and a half inches.
So on a standard subdivision lot?
Yeah.
What would be the requirement for a shade tree?
I think, uh, just tree trees.
Okay. That may be something you want to pursue, but if they're interested in that as well, I'm not, right number, I've seen enough of nods. You know, several of us have been to climate change workshops recently, and one of the biggest issues in the world is the cutting down of, um.
So just so I'm clear, this would be a requirement both to mitigate for trees that are removed prior to development application, as well as a requirement to replant on private lots, following approval of an application, or as part of an approval.
Do you have a clarification to that?
Or, my question then would be, so it's a blank lot to begin with, there's some fields that are gonna develop, so you're gonna put a standard there?
No, subdivision is that what it's going to become. The commercial, the in-commercial.
Right. And so, the, uh, the other part of the discussion that we talked about, um, a year or two ago was what they would, what this would cost in terms of staffing and resources. And that discussion too. We don't currently have a city forester, uh, so the, uh, time for enforcement would probably be spent between both the city foresters' time, as well as additional code enforcement, and then planning staff who are assigned to administer that part of the code.
Any interest in moving the conversation forward? The, the, the cost items that I have on my list are the archaeological mapping, that's gotta cost, and a, a soon staff is not prepared tonight to sell us those costs, so should we bring, okay, so there's, that's a cost issue, uh, the heritage trees, um, designations, as well as developing, um, the standards that we just talked about, and then the SHPO letter, um, not sure actually whether that has a cost, and then enforcement of membrane structures.
The SHPO letter would not have a cost.
That doesn't have a cost except just the archaeological mapping that might occur, okay. So, code enforcement of a number of things, probably, but if staff can keep track of that, because I think that's gonna be a decision package we're going to have to look at, um, and we may not want to adopt codes that we can't enforce, so. Jim?
Pete had a question for you. I have, um, I want to express a concern about the archaeological section. I was one of the commission members that wanted to initiate this, and from the outset, when we first discussed this last year, um, we, I at least, and I think we, uh, framed it in terms of, um, cooperation and consultation with, um, uh, the tribes who, um, have roots here in Oregon City, um, be they, you know, members of the Grand Ron tribes, um, you know, there's some, some other tribes, um, like the Klika Kat up in the Yakima Nation and, with the tribes, uh, the Kal, no, the, uh, the Matilla. The tribes of the Five Graves.
Yow, kaias.
Kaias, thank you. And every, um, when I first talked about this, I expressed an interest in having in this process a formal consultation, an ongoing consultation with the tribes to help build relationships with them. Every time, um, staff has come back to this, um, with, on, on this, it's, it's just never, it's never on the table. And I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I feel very much in the dark as to what is the source of the repulsitants in not incorporating that interest into this process. When Christina came here with the representative from SHPO, I brought it up again there, why, why isn't a member, you know, Grand Ron has a, quite a staff of cultural resource protection folks? One of them, um, uh, David Lewis, I think, is speaking at the MOO in a week or so. And, um, so I just was wondering if, if there's a secret, can you let me in on it? Um, or if, you know, some of the planning staff or, you know, commissioners know? Why, why is this falling on such death ears?
I can't answer your question because I haven't spoken to Christina about that particular meeting or, and I haven't spoken to Susan White from SHPO as well, so I'm a little bit out of the loop as well. I think the, well, from a cost standpoint, uh, doing the completeness review and having the applicant bear the burden of communication with SHPO is a cost-saving measure, and it doesn't interfere with any land use one hundred and point, uh, completeness review requirement. If we need, if we wanted us to look at whether completeness review should also include direct communication with the tribes, um, that's something that we would need to talk about, and I'm not aware why that has happened.
Mr. Mayor? So it seems like we've got a couple of choices to make in this area. One of the, one of them was to, to, um, look at pursuing, uh, an archaeological map and create a scoping document. It seems like we could direct that that scoping document include what commissioners and seeders' concerns are, um, and, and that would be my suggestion to go forward, is that option one, we go forward with a future archaeological map, um, with some criteria around a scoping document to include that, as well as, is whatever else we need to have in it.
Just thank you for your comments, Chris. It's, I'm gonna make a suggestion, and I, I don't know how, how, how informed we are as a city on this, but there's a document called National Register Bulletin Thirty-Eight, which, um, um, goes into very good detail on the process of consulting with Native Americans on their tribal heritage. And it might be an idea to incorporate that by reference into this code, um, or just base a process on that. And as far as a map, I, I know for a fact that the tribes themselves have their own archives, Grand Ron in particular, um, and I, you know, I would venture to guess that they're very versed in where their resources are in Oregon City. It may not be necessary to do, um, a map, because the consultation, they might be reluctant, given the history of destruction of their resources, to even reveal, you know, matters. And that's, that's, that's actually what National Register Bulletin Thirty-Eight points out very sensitively. And the process of consultation could be done in lieu of a map, or in, in, in some combination thereof, so that's what I'd hope staff would consider on that.
Okay.
And I'd like, I'd like to add, I think if we, if in fact that's something we pursue, I think that SHPO should be the one driving that. I mean, clearly, we're, we're relying on SHPO, so we don't have to have our staff stretched in trying to accomplish this. Let SHPO do that, let SHPO have that discussion with the tribes and bring that back to us. And I, I think that's kind of what, what we should look at.
Um, I'll gently disagree with him on that, and here's why. SHPO is like interstate agency, typically underfunded, um, and, you know, has strained resources and often can't, you know, stretch, and they're trying to cover the entire state. You know, and, and begging for their attention, you know, can often prove, you know, frustrating. Whereas, um, the tribes themselves, they're not trying to, um, you know, oversee the entire state. They have a, you know, a fairly geographic, you know, specific geographic interest, where, and, and this, this area in particular is very important to them. So I think that, you know, the knowledge and the sharing, I don't, I don't mean to cut SHPO out, but I think to rely on SHPO exclusively, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Since we have some disagreement in this, I think we need to talk about this more. Can we put this piece?
I think.
Over to another time and continue on these documents, if we're not gonna get, if there are next meeting at six?
Six thirty.
Six forty-five?
Thirty-five.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah.
Let's put this over, because I think this is something that we have a bigger conversation that also includes some.
Yeah, and we can come back to it once we get through the code.
Sure, that, or it might need another meeting.
Probably, yeah, okay.
Let's see, okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, so.
Have we finished trees?
We, have we finished trees? Not yet.
Okay.
There was a key in lieu of mitigation option, um, that's been renumbered, um, to be its own op, option, it wasn't clear, it was hidden in the mitigation section of the code. And, uh, also in section seventeen forty-one, one hundred, um, we've prepared a revised table which specifies what the permitted modifications are to dimensional standards, um, when you, uh, use the track, uh, tract option and put trees or tree growths in a, in dedicated tract. And this table, um, is, specifies the, uh, what percentage of lot size can be reduced, and what percentage setbacks can be reduced. And actually, it specifies exact setback reductions based on, uh, a range of lot sizes. So, on any one undivided parcel of land in Oregon City, you could use one of these options or you could use all four. And we would need to evaluate them according to what the applicant had proposed in this.
The mitigation piece, the mitigation piece I see is that, uh, within, within the natural resource overlay district, is that what you're talking about?
It's the same table in both sections of code. In the natural resource overlay district, it's, it's a setback in dimensional, uh, standard reduction, and, uh, was, uh, la, the language in this tree protection code was a little bit different. It talked about a, uh, previously it talked about transfer density. Essentially, that's what's going on when you dedicate a tract or a conservation easement and you take that land off the table for development. But the natural resource overlay district allows a transfer of density, whereas if you just dedicate a tract for tree growth, you're, you can get to reduce lot sizes and, um, and setback reductions, as long as you're averaging out throughout the subdivision.
I thought the table would be, in that they're talking about a replacement standard that includes trees and shrubs.
That's the mitigation standard for the natural resource overlay district.
Okay. We're coming to that yet?
We're coming to that.
Okay.
So, um, in the natural resource overlay district, uh, we've renumbered sections.
They're already in what section?
Seventeen forty-nine. Seventeen forty-nine. Natural resource overlay district is a, uh, section of code that implements both Title Three, which is water quality, and Title Thirteen, which is nation and neighborhoods habitat protection, and the metro urban growth management, uh, code. We have, uh, gone through this code and made some changes, um, in sections, so I'm gonna go through those. Uh, seventeen forty-nine, one eighty E, have modified the exemption and limitation for soil tests and minor subsurface excavation, so that you can use something other than handheld equipment to do a subsurface condition analysis, uh, such as a truck-mounted boer, um, and those sorts of things, uh, as long as you restore the, uh, cover to what it was previously. We clarified standards for land divisions. We've added a new section for processing land divisions that are highly, not highly constrained. We've added a new section for processing land divisions that are highly, not highly constrained. And.
Numbering on now?
That is seventeen forty-nine. Seventeen forty-nine, one sixty, which is page fifty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Subsection E. If you have, if you're doing a subdivision, the Natural Resource Overlay District needs to be delineated and placed in a tract. And the ownership and maintenance of that tract can be identified various ways, which is specified there. It can be held by a private homeowners association. Be subject to an easement conveying stormwater and surface water management rights to the city. At the owner's option, it could be public open space where the tract has been dedicated to the city or other governmental unit, or any other unit proposed by the owner approved by the city. And the tract itself can be exempt from minimum front requirements.
What are the benefits of dedicating the tract?
There'd be benefits to be.
Why are they?
Dedicating it, uh, reduced taxes through a conservation easement.
Right. And each tax, are they only quite municipal taxes or are they?
Uh, I believe it's federal tax charitable contribution. And that's, that's because I've only looked at the federal tax code with respect to Oregon law.
Doesn't have anything to do with, with property taxes.
Let's ask, let's ask attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Neely, I, I do think there are two aspects to it. Depending on how the easement is structured, there may well be federal tax benefits. But the, if, if they comply with Oregon statute requirements, they do provide for a tax statement on the property taxes as well, and that'd be municipal, county, district, and, and all the rest. And those provisions, I believe, are, or it's chapter two seventy-one. And let's see. And, and there, there, there may be other ones, but there are some property tax benefits. There could be property tax benefits to the conservation, conservation easement.
I understand she's not prepared it is to attract people to do so versus a major to your main role.
Right, and you know, I mean, if, if property is assessed at development value at, you know, you have R-two zone property, there's one level of, of assessment. But if you have a significant restriction on your ability to do it, that affects your assessed value, and there, there may be some other issues as well.
The other question I've got is in terms of maintenance and conservation easements.
That's.
I mean, you know, if, if, I mean, if you do the plannings and so forth, okay, you've got, you've got those planning densities and so on. If you hit a basis or moving in quickly, you're, I mean, you're going to have serious problems. So who's, how are you going to judge whether the area is being maintained?
They would put up a mi- a mitigation plan and performance surety that for three years under the Natural Resource Overlay District. And once it goes out of that three-year period, we no longer enforce it. Unless it's prescribed in that conservation easement.
Now, if it dedicated to the city, for example.
Right.
Responsibility goes to the city to maintain it for that three-year period?
Depends how the conservation easement's written again. And I've looked at the code and you can be a third-party enforcement party or a holder. And if the city was a third-party, I believe it's, if you have a third-party right of enforcement under the Oregon Revised Statutes, you could enforce the terms of the conservation easement without holding the property. Potentially.
I know many of us were interested in, you, you addressed in your staff report the New Creek Canyon case study. So this is apropos to that. One that I know Doug's concerns as we went through the urban and rural reserves was that a property owner, if, if, if a generally park-like area like New Creek Canyon was brought into the city, they have urban standard development and urban-style taxes. But then we talked with planning about mitigation and conservation easement is one way that, that a property owner can seek mitigation.
And.
Taxes, I guess.
In the three-page memo that we prepared, one of the points that we made was that land use review is not a, not a prerequisite for doing conservation easements. You could, you could dedicate a conservation easement to the city.
Anyhow.
Anyhow, yeah. And one of the, one of the aspects of the New Creek Canyon is that we've got an exist, we've got a lot of, we've got the county, we've got metro, holding land. And I can go to that section on this map here and describe in more detail. But we have a long-term management strategy for the open space areas within New Creek Canyon. One of the things that probably come out of that is what the, what conservation easement should look like in more detail and who they, who the holders should be and, and who should have the long-term.
Let me ask you, do you need more discussion on what a conservation easement is? Or do you wish to go right into how that might affect New Creek Canyon?
I, I don't know if we want to go into that discussion now because I think it's, it's something we haven't had before. It might take a little bit longer to talk about it than we had time for it to come on.
We do need to get through this because we'll set that over as a, as a possible single issue. But why don't you see how we get through the rest of the code amendments? And then we can start tackling some of the big issues.
And we're almost. So with respect to mitigation, we have replaced the mitigation requirement that we had previously with the Metro Model Code mitigation, which requires a higher ratio of shrubs to trees.
Are you on trail standards?
Um, in chapter seventeen forty-nine mitigation standards.
Page fifty-six?
Page.
Okay, it shows, shows standard for trees. Oh, I need this, yes, I'm, I'm, thank you.
Way heavy, page fifty-seven, cover page fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, okay.
Yep.
Got it.
On page fifty-eight, an applicant has the option of doing a Type Three discretionary review before the Planning Commission, where they would have a natural resource professional prepare a report. If they want to use something other than a prescribed mitigation standard with a number of plantings. If they do that, we require that they tell the city what the condition of the existing vegetative corridor is based on the canopy cover and whether or not there are invasive species covering more than ten percent of the site. So it would be good marginal or degraded based on that. In addition to the other requirements for alternative mitigation that are in the code.
I'm just curious, if they had a degraded area, are your standards less?
Oh, I mean, this is going to be a discretionary review. They're going to have to do an alternatives analysis as well as a, uh, an impact analysis that shows that what they're proposing for mitigation meets the functional values of the overlay district. And it's going to, it's going to have to meet or exceed what the clear and objective standard is under the mitigation code for the planning commission to approve it. And there are sites where the site is either too constrained, such as a major highway project where there's limited area for mitigation or, or your mitigation has to occur off-site. So in these unique situations where they have smaller or larger impact areas than are prescribed in the, under one part of the code, they may want to move forward with a discretionary review. That's why that section's in there.
This, now you're indicating this is a function of the planning commission, and I'm wondering if there should be a, either a subcommittee or something of that nature under the planning commission review of this issue. I mean, it's, it's complicated enough, and it may well be the extra piece required is generally a little bit different and you might want to expect the planning commission.
Right now, what we, what we require right now is that it be a natural resource professional area of hydrology, wildlife biology, botany. And then that report gets reviewed by a subconsultant of the city as a peer reviewer. Currently, we use David Evans, an associate Swetland specialist, to review the report for compliance with these particular sections of seventeen forty-nine. The peer review that's required.
Have we had any conservation easements come through?
We're about to, for lot subdivision. Evidence condition of approval.
We've got how it goes.
And we've drafted a template, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so. Under seventeen forty-nine, two forty, on page sixty and sixty-one, clarified language with respect to residential transfer density credits, specifying that under B, the area of the Natural Resource Area Overlay District tract may be added to the net developable area outside of the tract or conservation easement area in order to calculate the allowable number of lots. So what we're basically clarifying is the process for calculating what your developable, developable lots are. And then we refer to the table, the same kind of table that was in seventeen forty-one code, which allows permissible reductions in lot size. And an applicant may choose to make these adjustments over as many lots as required. For example, the lot reduction could be spread across all of the remaining lots in the proposed subdivisional partition, or could be applied to only those lots needed to incorporate the areas of the Natural Resource Overlay District tract. As long as throughout the subdivision, including the area of the tract or easement, you're still meeting your minimum lot size requirements. And table seventeen forty-nine, two forty A specifies how small your lots could go based on your underlying zone district and how narrow and deep your lot, lot widths would be. Your lots would be, as well as what the reduced dimensional standards for detached single-family residential units are. And the reduced dimensional standards for a single-family attached or two-family attached residential units. Under chapter seventeen fifty, under page sixty-seven, clarified the neighborhood association meeting requirement that anybody applying for a land use review of a certain magnitude, which in most cases subdivision, site plan or dot design review, would not include minor site plan and, and partition applications, however. The applicant would send a certified mail, a letter to the Neighborhood Association and Citizen Involvement Committee describing, this is, describing the proposed project. Other communication methods, including a, email, may be used if approved by the Neighborhood Association. And within thirty days of that communication, a meeting would be held. And if the, if the Neighborhood Association does not want to or cannot meet within thirty days, the applicant may hold their own meeting after six P M. or on a weekend, and then they would provide notice to the Neighborhood Association, the Citizen Involvement Committee, and all of property owners within three hundred feet. If they hold their own meeting, a copy of the certified letter is required for a complete application. And the meeting is, has to be held within the boundaries of the Neighborhood Association or in a city facility. If the Neighborhood Association is not currently recognized by the city, the applicant shall request a meeting with the Citizen Involvement Committee.
Now, is it just a change?
Yeah.
The Neighborhood Association is not currently recognized by the city or does not exist.
Or inactive.
Or inactive.
That's what we did, this guy, and it wasn't in here, so.
Okay.
I do have some clues on that.
Okay.
And the applicant needs to submit a sign-in sheet of the attendant, attendance, summary of the issues discussed, and a confirmation letter from the C I C. or Neighborhood Association indicating that the meeting was held. And if a, if a, there was a separately noticed meeting, the applicant just should submit a copy of the meeting flyer, a sign-in sheet, and a summary of the issues discussed.
I have a question. What, what kind of actions constitute a minor site plan that we would be excluding? So what, what are the kinds of, kinds of things that are in a minor site plan?
Expansions of a commercial building up to a thousand square feet, changes to parking lot circulation and ingress and egress locations. And the Community Development Director can approve certain land uses that don't fall into the categories of minor site plan if they're not specified. Changes in use potentially. So if you have a, let's say you have a residential building in a commercial zone that is still being occupied as a residential use, but changes use and becomes commercial, and minor site plan can be required. For example, on a small lot where there's a house, an existing driveway, but it's being converted to an office. And you want to do a parking analysis, landscaping, and those sorts of minor things. Impacts transportation-wise are not going to trigger a full transportation analysis in those cases. Those are the kinds of things in a minor site.
Any other questions? Okay.
We're on page seventy-seven. Top of the page, with respect to expiration of approvals. We have cleared up a typo. We've added all type one through four approvals except for zone changes. Comprehensive plan map amendments, conditional uses, and master plans automatically become void if any of the following events occur, and we have a two-year approval period for those. We also mentioned that annexations become void if a vote of the citizens reject the, the application. Cross-reference to the charter. Under extension of approval, we're requiring the applicant provide evidence of implementation of a permit. This normally requires an application for a land use review, public notice and comment, as well as a significant review by the Development Services Department of civil plants. So public utility plans and those sorts of things, furtherance of their permit. And if they're, if they're working towards those permits, but through no fault of their own, they haven't constructed things yet, then they can get an extension for up to one year on a two, on a two-year per approval. What's your question?
Yes. I had a, a question asked of me regarding master planning and that comment that if within two years of the date of the final decision, a building permit has not been issued, well, that kind of defeats the purpose of the master planning. And the question, or at least that was the perception. And the, the question was, well, if, if an applicant comes before us, whether it be the hospital or somewhere like that, and, and requests a master plan, then there's typically a development in sight. That's why they would request the build, that's why we have a building permit within two years. We don't require a master plan unless there's some development planned, correct? Or, or, or am I wrong? Because if, let's, for instance, if you have a, a, a business that is, that falls within our master planning guideline, determines that they, that they want to do a master plan without development two years, then what, what's the purpose? Because we're going to avoid it if, if they don't build within two years.
You can tell him I, that, um, I think you're, you're.
You can tell him I think you're correct that a master plan typically comes when somebody comes in because they have a large institution, wants to do something, and frankly, that's the hammer that the city has, force the master plan to make them, make those institutions think about those things. So we won't issue land use permits unless those institutions go through a permit process. So that's what we've typically seen. But you're right, there's nothing that prevents somebody, even if they don't have a development project, to start thinking about it, and we probably want to encourage them to think about it, you know, before it's driven by a particular development, so that might be something that staff wants to take a look at in terms of expiration of master plans.
Maybe we put something that due to discretion of the community development director, that can be extended or something like that, because that's pretty specific language. And I missed that when we first.
Everybody's favorite subject, parking, that we're going with?
Yeah, off street parking and loading. We've reordered some of these sections for readability, providing credits for use of low-impact development standards, which are to be adopted separately from these code amendments. That would include any technique approved by the city engineer for low-impact stormwater development standards and those sorts of things, including the use of pervious pavements, rain gardens, et cetera, et cetera.
Excuse me, Eric.
Yeah.
You're right, you're there. Why are you doing that that way? Why aren't those going into code?
These are engineering standards which need to be adopted by resolution because they involve specifications and engineering standards.
So that'll follow later?
Yeah. And there's a, the low-impact development standard requires that an applicant measure very specifically all of the stormwater generated on the site from the impervious surfaces, and then implement a series of mitigation techniques. And these will apply to any new development. And in the final draft stages of getting the stormwater design manual updated, and it's, that's chapter thirteen of the code. So we're providing reference to them, and we're providing incentives to use them, but we're not going to adopt that, those specifications as part of the zoning code.
Another family structures and apartment complexes where the party places are assigned, and you find no place designated for somebody to visit, and oftentimes you get a lot of cars on the street because of it. Is there any way we can deal with that? I mean, you're indicating a number of spaces, but to a large extent, that's probably taking into consideration that you're going to have, I mean, you're not better than you're going to have more than one vehicle per unit. I'm wondering if there's any way we can address the allocation of spaces for visitors in our code. I don't know if we can. Maybe the attorney can tell us.
Currently, we don't, but the, we've typically required, that's typically the owner's responsibility, but.
The owner of the complex is somebody that you're not even living in.
I don't see why we can't. I do know that Metro is, you know, makes some clear notifications, they want to reduce the amount of parking. And so you've got a balance to strike, but certainly you could have a regulation, I believe, that says a certain amount of parking at multifamily dwelling is designated for visitor spacing. I think there may be some affordable housing issues that may be implicated by that, but I don't, I can't think of them offhand. So as a general thought, I think you can do that.
We typically, when we see these applications, we ask that question, where are you going to put visitors? And for instance, the code, or the code, the code had already looked at that and had developed parking, which we rearranged, but still, they had thought forward, and that makes a lot of sense. So we don't see, haven't seen a lot of multifamily, but we do ask that question, and generally, they're pretty open to doing that.
No, just thinking, we're given some mixed use things, particularly residential topic of residential, also.
Well, that was the question, Doug, that we've had discussed when we were talking the mixed use down in the downtown district, is there's not going to be parking, so we shouldn't actually have that extra parking. In fact, we'll be lucky to get parking for who we have. So we had many discussions about that, and we actually came up with not very, many good answers, I don't think.
We've also got the on-street parking credit for mixed-use corridor and commercial zones as well. So if you have a, you can have that exclusive use of that on-street parking space because it's public right of way, however, you can get credit for it, which may build some way to alleviating the issues. And as you know, there's a parking study going on with respect to this downtown, so.
Okay, let's move on.
Requiring that off-street parkings for dwellings shall be located on the same lot as the dwelling. This is seventeen fifty two oh two oh. In seventeen fifty two oh four oh, we're requiring that all uses other than single and two-family dwellings shall comply with the bicycle parking standards and for that specified specific uses. Deleted some repetitive language in this section, requiring signage for indoor bicycles areas so that the public knows where those are. And finally, adding a reference to the purpose statement with respect to alternative landscape and parking plans. So if you have an existing development, or you have a very small lot that you're developing, and you can't meet every aspect of the grants of the parking lot dimensional requirements, you can propose an alternative dimensional plan for your parking lot, as long as it's safe, and that would be verified by a transportation engineer. This could be used in small developments as well as larger developments that are trying to use alternative stormwater management techniques and those sorts of things. So somewhat of a variance situation there. Similarly, the landscaping section of the parking lot, you can propose an alternative landscaping plan that has low-impact development standards, and you wouldn't necessarily have to meet a five-foot buffer strip around the perimeter of the site. And what we're looking for is that you're meeting the intent of the code with respect to shading the parking lot, improving stormwater quality, and those sorts of things. But if you have a very constrained site, and you want to propose an alternative that meets our low-impact development standards, that would be reviewed as an alternative landscaping plan.
I'm going to raise a question here. In terms of institutional, it seems rather surprising, my welfare institution is wanting to have an icicle space being applicable. That doesn't make sense.
Well, I think the standard would be the same as an office, or we could just remove the reference to that use, and that way it would be a one space for.
I would suggest doing so, because I presume some plans are going to come in by accident.
Absolutely. Site plan and design review includes credits for low-impact development standards. We're requiring that minor site plan, in some cases, also show compliance with seventeen point six two oh five five, which is the institutional and commercial building requirements. And previously, that was implied but not made explicit. Those are standards that govern facades and transparency. There's a screening exemption for H VAC and solar in certain cases. Solar would be exempt from certain screening requirements. That's under seventeen sixty two oh five oh oh two oh. And under seventeen sixty two oh five nine cottage housing, they've provided additional clarity for the dimensional standards and incorporated a provision which allows existing houses to be incorporated into a cottage housing site, should it be proposed, and they would get a density credit for that existing house. Previously, the house would have had to have been demolished or partitioned off if it was a cottage development in order to meet the density requirements for cottage housing under site plan and design review.
Can we ask that in a consumer way? So we have really removed barriers to cottage housing in our community through the work we've done here.
Really have. This code echoes a lot of code that was passed in, is under, and is being used in the Puget Sound area. It allows a site of a certain size, a full two acres minimum, to do this kind of housing. There are some very prescriptive standards here for common open space and building footprint minimum maximum, but it certainly has removed a barrier to that. Master plan, changed the references to concept planning throughout the master plan code sections which are seventeen sixty five to, say, general master plan, so that there's no confusion between a concept plan as required by Metro for areas in the U G D and a master plan areas within the city limits. Also, we've removed terms safely from the master plan criteria in seventeen point six five point oh five oh C, because it's vague, and it doesn't preclude the city from requiring that transportation impact analysis look at off-site intersections and according to the city's standards. Under chapter seventeen point eighty, communication facilities, there's revisions to the design standards for screening of auxiliary support walls. Those are for, if you have an equipment shed or something that powers a cell tower, this is a specific requirement for the use of architectural materials for screening or similar quality of material as approved by the community development director. And finally, there was a zoning matrix included in the packets that was intended to provide guidance for staff and not be included in the municipal code, and we would like to remove that matrix from the code. And if you have specific questions about the code, we can still address those anytime between now and the close of the public hearing sometime in the future. Yeah, we have a public hearing for these on the twenty first. So I will go into the issues that were raised at the March seventeenth hearing.
So may I address the planning commission chair? So the sense of the planning commission is that you're pretty cohesive with all of these changes minus the ones that he's about to tell us about the outstanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we haven't gotten to prove it anymore far enough here.
The packet, there's a memo describing very small change recommended code revision since planning commission review to seventeen fifty two oh six oh D, which is a requirement for interior parking lot landscaping. Initially, the standard said that interior parking lot landscaping shall not be counted towards the fifteen percent minimum total site landscaping required by section seventeen sixty two oh five oh. We've added, unless otherwise permitted by the dimensional standards of the underlying zone district. Same provision applies for seventeen sixty two oh five oh A one F. And the reason for that is in certain zones like mixed-use corridor, we do actually allow landscaping within a parking lot to count towards the entire land site landscaping requirement because of the ability of those zones to build to the property lines and build a very dense subdivision, dense development style. And we want to encourage innovative landscaping, and particularly low-impact developments, landscaping in those types of developments. So the planning commission did not review that, but it was primarily implied in the code, and we were making it more explicit here. If the planning commission doesn't raise any objection to that, we'd like to put that into the record.
Objections to or questions to either of those? Two of them, right? Or three, I guess, three things?
No.
Okay. To give us the links, but I guess that's not real code. Okay, then, do you want to throw, in the remaining five minutes, do you want to throw it open for questions or concerns or areas in which we need more work done?
Well, briefly go over this map that we've prepared.
Yes.
Yeah. The map that we've prepared is the urban reserves area in the vicinity of New Creek Canyon. There's about six hundred and ninety-five acres of land designated within the dark, thick, blue border on that map. The pink areas that you see that are sort of rectangular in shape are lots that are owned by Metro. There's about a hundred and eighty-eight acres of land owned by Metro. Eighty-five acres of that area is ODOT right-of-way for Highway two thirteen. Approximately two hundred and eighty acres of it is over twenty-five percent slope and would be regulated under the city's geologic hazard overlay zone if it was part of the city. And the natural resource overlay district is the greenish areas that you see there. And there's approximately two hundred and twenty-five acres of natural resource overlay district within that urban reserve boundary. Remainder, the land ownership is divided between ODOT, Metro, and private land. About four hundred and twenty-two acres of private land in that six hundred and ninety-five acres.
So that's inside the city, the natural resource overlay district is.
Not applied.
Is it applied?
No, we cannot regulate outside the city.
So you're estimating what could.
Yeah, this is hypothetical.
Okay.
Extension of the city's overlay zone based off of slope data.
Right.
And title three screen data. And what we've done is apply our boundaries based on the presence of perennial and intermittent streams and the slopes adjacent to them, which can be up to two hundred feet on either side of the stream. It would max out at two hundred feet if there was this clip there.
There are several true shares everyone in New Creek. Many of them are within the city boundaries. And when you refer to the quarter twenty-two acres of private, that included those as well?
No, that's just the area within the urban reserve.
The urban reserve, okay. What was the amount of Metro land, James?
Let's estimate about eighty, sorry, hundred and eighty-eight.
Oh, okay.
The second discretion item was conservation easements. Basically, we can require conservation easements within land that is regulated under development review, and complete mitigation in those areas in the event of default or failure by the owner to maintain those terms. Similarly, we can have a, an owner can, has the option to do that on private land for trees and tree growths, although that is not mandatory. We attach a copy of the State of Oregon's application for conservation easement special assessment. And in order to qualify for special assessment, we have to show that the easement that is drafted meets the requirements of being considered exclusively for conservation purposes under the internal revenue code. And they must, the owner must provide written certification to. Um, and they must, the owner must provide written certification to the county assessor that conservation easement satisfies the requirements of paragraph A of that subsection. And, uh, that form has a provision for the owners to sign, a space for the owner to sign, and the holder. But, uh, we have not put the, prescribed the language of conservation easements in the code, since they are unique situations, each one, and typically the language of the conservation easement gets drafted, um, either following land use approval or in the process of land use approval to suit the needs of the, ease of the approval.
If I might, my very early, um, my personal information, um, it was actually a conservation easement that was identified when a building has, uh, was actually within the conservation easement. I don't know if it was missed in the development or not, and so the commission removed the conservation easement from that building. My question is this: it identified conservation easement. What, what can a property owner do or not do to remove that easement? Either in the transfer of property to another owner, or the, one of the properties decides that they want to do something else? What, what hurdles are in the way?
There may be allowances within the conservation easement for construction of customary buildings if it's farm use, for example. Uh, they might prescribe limited development. Uh, it all depends on how it's written.
What's the easement that's approved?
The, the key piece of any easement is you've got the burden property, the property that, you know, has the resources on it, and you've got the holder of the easement, and that can be the city, it could be a charitable organization, it could be the state, it could be whoever. Whoever the holder of that easement is, controls what's going to happen. You know, the terms of the easement says either, you know, it's going to remain un, un, unaffected, or as, as Pete indicated, maybe it's for farm use, whatever the easement might do that restricts things. If that easement is held by a charitable organization, say the nature conservancy is a classic example, although they like to own land rather than, um, than to have easements, but, you know, that, that type of thing, that holder of the easement really controls what's going to happen, and they can release it. The hurdle is going to be getting that holder to do something. And let's say that you have property where a particular property owner has the land and creates its own charitable organization that's going to be the Oregon City West Farm Conservancy. You know, there's, there's potential for mischief there, um, but it's, it's, you know, the, the question is who the holder, holder is, and they control what needs to be done to lift the conservation easement.
And they don't have to go through any process?
Not unless, uh, there's, there's something else, uh, some other reason why they would have to. Um, to the extent there is a, you know, the removal of the easement, the property gets reassessed, and, you know, the, the taxes would, would go up because the limitation would be gone. But if it's not the city as a holder of the conservation easement, that, that holder controls what happens with it.
Under general information, it says the conservation easement must be in perpetuity.
That's what I was...
What's that mean? Right, number one, under general information in the form?
It's, you know, for example, like a dedication of a road to the, to the city is in perpetuity, but the city can still vacate that road. If I have, if you have an easement for a roadway across your neighbor's property, and you build a driveway out to another road or another access comes available, that neighbor may come up and say, you know, if I, if I give you two thousand dollars, would you get rid of the easement so that I can put up a shed on, on there? Even though the easement's in perpetuity, because if they don't give it up, if there's no negotiation, if the holder of, of easement doesn't let it go, it is in perpetuity, but that arrangement can still be...
Sort of like marriage, but she can get divorced. Got it, okay.
That, uh, you know, so you, you want to be careful who the holder of the easement is.
Does, does the saving, uh, the holder of the easement within the city limits, is that decision pressed to the city?
If the city is the holder of the easement, if the city is the...
Let me rephrase that. Person wants to come to us with a conservation easement, they want to hold the property, they might in fact decide to do something with, with another date, the city has no control of that. Can the city put in binding language? Should a private property holder or any holder other than, uh, a government jurisdiction, can, in terms of the conservation easement, can the city put in some binding language into it?
And I'm trying to understand the situation. So a property owner wants to develop their property, says, I'm going to set this aside in conservation easement, can we put in, make a requirement that the easement be, what? Non-releasable, without city approval?
Well, what, I mean, can we, can we specify in terms of the easement, what kind of development could ever be permitted?
Certainly for the holder, we can, but we can say that, you know, in, in our seventeen-forty-nine, we, we require that it either be set aside and set in track, that it be dedicated to the city, or be subject to a conservation easement. And we can say the conservation easement must include the following terms.
Okay.
All right, and, and those terms are X, Y, and Z.
So in part of the development agreement, and they're setting aside a conservation easement, we can, we can attack the, very specific, in terms of, in perpetuity, we could force it to be in perpetuity, with the constraints that we put on it.
We can try and, you know, a-again, what happens, we say, it's got to be in perpetuity. You know, uh, Mr. Smith grants the nature conservancy, let's, let's pick, uh, you know, solid, um, organization, that it's got to be in perpetuity to the nature conservancy. They approve that, twenty years down the road, the nature conservancy says, this piece nev, does not fit our ongoing mission, therefore, we're going to release our conservation easement.
I wonder whether we could, that we could be a hundred percent if the city were the holder.
Yeah.
Okay, this has been a good discussion on many topics, as usual, we didn't have enough time, um, and I appreciate the patience of the planning commission, so you, you're quite a bit more familiar with it, with these articles, I think, than we are. Um, so next steps are, we will be looking at this group of code changes that happen April, January first.
April point first, we will have a public hearing, uh, present a PowerPoint to the public and the commission, again, that provides an overview of these. It won't be as detailed as this work session has been. Um, and if, uh, there are additional concerns and comments that come up with respectable language, uh, we'd be happy to entertain those. I believe the, the commission has the prerogative to, uh, either make the decision that night or to, you know, continue it over if there are outstanding issues at the, at the hearing on the twenty-first.
And, and I think that, um, I mean, some of the exciting things are the, the cost of, of enforcement of some of the new pieces, um, the, the archaeological, um, shippo mapping piece, what we knew about trees, um, I think we're, essentially the, kind of the things I feel are unresolved today. So whether you want to bring us as planning staff additional information, help us with those decisions, or whether we want to carve out chunks, I guess that's our prerogative as we go through the process.
What staff can provide for you is a recommendation of how we can proceed in the interim, um, and then a recommendation for future work items, because there's clearly some additional work that needs to be done on the code. Uh, would require, um, you know, re-noticing and doing another measure fifty-six notice app, uh, for those, but, uh, there are certain aspects of the code where we're going to need to do this, which, uh, not related to what we're reviewing right now. Um, so there's certainly an opportunity to do that.
Okay, any comments, questions from anyone? Thank you, and we are adjourned. We'll reconvene in five minutes.